For this very distinguished award. So I'd like to call Mr. Eric Bitterman, who's already up. Tracy Mears is up. Antoinette Dardencentrone. Ms. Chris Valen. Ms. Kay Jackson, I don't know if she's here. Ms. Rita Jones. And Ms. Mary Spels.
Okay, good evening. As a board member, this is one of those special nights. This is one of those opportunities where being on the board is truly a privilege. So tonight, we are going to honor two individuals plus, right? Two-plus individuals. Who have gone what we call the extra mile for the Greenberg Central School District. So, on behalf of the committee, I'm actually going to invite Dr. Chase to introduce the first of our award winners.
So the committee received quite a few nominations. And it was really a tough decision because there's so many people who truly deserve the extra mile award, especially in living in Nettie Jackson's truth. That being said, there was one, well, actually two, that actually stood out to the committee. And I will start by reading the nomination letter for this individual. This person has served the Greenberg Central School District and engaged the Greenberg community of district families for years as an extraordinary teacher. This person has shared their vision and work with great determination to build a love for music and arts and young students. This person goes far beyond what could be expected of him or her in the way that he or she uses so many different kinds of musics and dance and performances to broaden the experience of the arts and nurture and appreciation of the role and the values of the arts, both in education and in life. Those of us who have been fortunate enough to attend assemblies at this particular school, and I'm being a bit ambiguous on purpose. This particular individual designs his or her programs as a platform for the creative expression for his or her students through song, dance, movement, and acting. He or she doesn't simply instruct students but to move, dance, or sing, but give them a melody or a story to tell through dance. The person who nominated gave a lot of information, and I will not read the entire, but I will read the ending. The ending reads, "Many teachers lose their enthusiasm over the years, but this particular person is always trying to do more for the children. He or she holds himself or herself to a very high standard and is always shy and stays out of the spotlight, wishing to play a supportive role more than the center of attention. This person's a true teacher committed to seeing his or her students learn and grow. He or she has proven himself or herself to be a person of integrity and high aspirations. Children need to feel the joys and wonders and hopes and dreams that music and art bring to life." With that said, Mr. Peter Roberts is this year's recipient of the extra mile award. The committee could not have picked a better person. I remember coming to the district and watching you with the children. Moreover, I remember about four years ago at a graduation at Highview, and the children were providing entertainment for their moving up ceremony. I watched your eye contact with the children, and there was a sense of love that you have for what you do and for the children you serve. You are very deserving of this award, and this is what it looks like. And it reads, "Mr. Peter Roberts, June 19th, 2018. You went the extra distance for children." Well deserved.
I'd like to read a definition. The definition is gratitude. So the definition of gratitude, "The quality of being thankful, readiness to show appreciation for, and to return kindness." I have lots of gratitude for this district, Greenberg. It has given me the opportunity to develop, to learn the art of teaching, to shape lives and to give expression to the power and majesty of music. I have to give gratitude to parents who supported the music program. Parents from Ghana, Nigeria, the Philippines, Israel, Iran, the Ukraine, Ireland, Mexico, Germany, Korea, Japan, and of course, the United States. I have to give gratitude to Terry Pavone, who is our composer in residence, who for over 20 years wrote pieces for our children for our moving up ceremony. I have to give gratitude to all of my teachers, especially Judith Thomas. And Mrs. Thomas is a well-recognized teacher in the United States and in Canada and in Europe. What I learned from Mrs. Thomas was not just how to teach, but that there should be a moral component to your teaching, and there's an ethical component to the teaching. That's the one thing that I left when I, after I studied with her. That's when I remembered the most. And so I've tried to do that as well, without injecting religion. So what's really great about what I have done, there are two things that I remember most. It's not the assemblies, it's not all of the wonderful things that the children have done. There were two girls. They were both selected mutes when they came into this school. This was years ago. In one instance, one of the girls had been abused. She came into my classroom and she would not speak. Don't you know that for our Unity Day celebration, that young lady got up and sang a solo in front of hundreds of children and adults at the Bailey School? The second person was a shy Asian girl, again, selected mute, who also got up and sang a solo for moving up ceremony and for some of our assemblies. Now, why is that so important to me? The interpersonal relationships for me are probably the most important part of music, of what I'm doing. Music is great. There are lots of great music teachers. But I think it's the interpersonal relationships that will make this special. And I think I made a difference, at least in the lives of those two children, and probably others, but those are the two that I remember the most. So I'm just going to end the kindergarten wall, and this is how I feel. Of all the things, remember this the best. Don't hurt each other and clean up your mess. Take a nap every day. Wash before you eat. Hold hands, stick together, look before you cross the street. And remember the seed in the little paper cup. First, the root goes down, and then the plant grows up. Thank you so very much.
Mr. Roberts, I'm sorry, but you need to come back to get your award. Well deserved. And it's important to note that Mr. Roberts was nominated by Mira Khan. I believe she's here. I saw her. Okay. Husband's here, that's just, that's good enough. Okay. The next one, it's going to be a little bit difficult for me to try to be ambiguous with this one. I think it's pretty obvious once I read the first sentence, so I'm just going to go ahead and announce the person. But I also would like to read the nomination letter because it's really important that you know why this person was selected. Ms. Mona Freitag and Bradley, Community Extra Mile Award. Ms. Mona Freitag and Bradley, they were both nominated by Sylvia Simon. And the description reads, "The children at Highview are used to seeing Mona Freitag and her dog Bradley in the classrooms. 'Hi Bradley' is the common refrain. Most people, however, don't know how they came to start working at the school. Mona tells us that she adopted a Havvies breed, Bradley, because of his size and because he was hypoallergenic. She knew that Havvies dogs are known to be good with children, and this was important to her because of her young niece would visit often at the time. Mona is an educator who taught for many years, so her first instinct after getting Bradley was to take him to puppy preschool, to have him trained. The trainer thought that Bradley had a great temperament and would make a good therapy dog. Therapy dogs are trained to work with children and most people who need comfort. They are often used in nursing homes, hospitals, and schools. Mona trained him to be tested and certified as a therapy dog, and he passed the final test with flying colors on his first attempt. Mona hoped that she and Bradley could make a positive educational addition to the school. She and Dr. Chase agreed that the Highview students would benefit from their interaction with Bradley. After a quick virtual introduction online, Mona and Bradley met with the principal, Mr. Mastriangelo, and then with the students and staff at Highview. The program began in the spring of 2015, and it has been growing ever since. Initially, the reading specialist selected students who felt would benefit most from Bradley's calming presence. These students would be pulled for individual one-on-one time with Bradley where they could practice reading at their own pace with no pressure from Bradley and all the comfort and courage he could muster. The program has been so successful that it has grown to include more students. Bradley and Mona are in the school up to three days a week. He works with small groups of students as well as the entire classroom. He works with special needs students and does a program for the English language learners as well. The children look forward to seeing this dynamic duo each week. They have become a positive addition to the Greenberg family. When they are not visiting Highview, Mona and Bradley can be found at the Greenberg Public Library where students can sign up to read to Bradley in a program known as Reading Has Gone to the Dogs." Mona Freitag, you've been nominated several times. This is your year. Highview, this is your year. Well, you have two recipients from one school, and that really says a lot about what's going on over there. With that said, Mona Freitag, please come up and get your well deserved. Mona and Brad, Mona Freitag and Bradley, because they are a tag team, you went the extra distance for children. You volunteered your time as well as your beautiful dog, and we thank you for all that you do to not only what you do at Highview, but also how you positively promote our school district and the community. So we thank you for that.
I didn't prepare a speech, but I want to thank everyone for the opportunity you've given me to work with Bradley and the wonderful experiences I've had at Highview. Bradley and I come home every day, and we are totally overwhelmed with the experiences we have working with the children there. I wouldn't give it up for anything. It just has completed my life in every way. The children in this district are the best. They're the brightest, and they are the best, and they deserve every opportunity to succeed. And if Bradley offers them that opportunity in any way, I want them to have it. And they deserve it all. They deserve it all, and I hope that the community continues to give them every opportunity to succeed and to be the best that they can be. And if he can be a part of that, I want to go along for the ride. So thank you.
Do you want to make closing remarks?
So, once again, congratulations to our winners this evening. And here's where I will plug you, plug our award ceremony once again. We all know amazing people who do so much for our school district. If you know somebody who has not yet either been nominated or has not yet won this award, but we know has gone the extra mile, please, please nominate them next year, okay? So I thank you on behalf of our Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award Committee, and once again, we look forward to seeing your nominations in the future. Good night.
I think I see Sylvia. Sylvia is the one who nominated you, Mona. You should know that. And what I read was not only just her nomination letter, but I also read a piece that she has submitted that was to be published in the Spotlight magazine, based on the work that you've done. So that came from her heart. Again, I want to congratulate and thank Eric Bitterman, Tracy Mears, Antoinette Dardencentrone, Chris Valen, Kay Jackson, Rita Jones, and Mary Spels for selecting these two individuals to represent our school. We thank you all for going the extra mile.
And now, of course, we'd like to honor someone else. Someone who has chaired the Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award Committee for the past several years, has gone out of his way to promote positive energy and look to the bright side in everything we do in this district. I'd like to honor Eric Bitterman. This says, "Presented to Eric Bitterman in grateful appreciation of your dedicated service to the children of Greenberg CSD."
I've been, I've been a teacher for over 26 years. But one of the great honors that I have ever been bestowed, honestly, is the opportunity to serve in my community as a board member for the Greenberg Central School District. I want to thank the community. I want to thank the board, Dr. Chase, David, for giving me the opportunity. And, and you're not really going to get rid of me because I'll still be around. So I want to thank you all once again. Thank you.
This is Eric's last full public board meeting, so we thank him for his years of service on the Board of Education.
So this is the time of year, we thank you all and for your patience, where we offer our acknowledgements to not only community members, but also to staff. We have a considerate amount of staff who are retiring, who have given years of dedicated service to the children of the Greenberg Central School District. And so we would like to take a moment just to thank them for their services. We also would like to take a moment to wish them well in their retirement and to let them know that they have definitely completed a wonderful job here at Greenberg Central School District. Collectively, our retirees have touched the lives of over thousands of children. These children have more than likely have moved on to touch other lives. Just understand the ripple effect. And so we just find it very fitting to acknowledge these individuals, let them know that we appreciate their work, let them know that we understand how hard it is to be an educator and how proud we are of them. So, with that said, I'd like to call our retirees to be acknowledged, and they would like to offer a few words to our community and to the students and the staff which they work with, as well as to our board members. First person is Magda Ali, Woodlands Middle High School. Congratulations to you.
Thank you. Thank you for Greenberg District and all. I worked 16 years, started with Leve Jackson, Highview School, RJ Bailey, and Woodlands Middle School and High School. Thank you all, all teachers, staff, you're all wonderful people. I love you all, and we're going to miss you. Thank you. Thank you so much.
The next person, our songbird, Ms. Shirley Crabbe.
Wow, that's beautiful. Thank you very much. Oh, sure. Oh gosh, it's heavy, too. I have been teaching for 32 years. 22 years of it has been here at Woodlands. And many of the board members have been students of my, their kids have been students of mine, or I have had wonderful relationships with their kids on some level through my work with the play. And the greatest thing about teaching is seeing how your students turn out and knowing that you were there to give them a word of encouragement, to tell them that you believe in them. I still have students that come around and I tell them, "You need a pep talk. Just call me up. I'll give you a half an hour. If you can do it, you can do it, you can do it." And they call, and it's very nice. The other thing that's really wonderful is the great relationships that you have with parents, like Rita Jones. And I see other parents, and my brain is old, so I can't remember everybody's names, but I want to thank you because those are relationships that I will have forever. And thank you so much for allowing me to serve your kids. It's been a pleasure.
Is June Gonzalez here? Okay? Let's give it up for June Gonzalez. June might be watching us. Is Karen Mallory Johnson here? No? But we wish both June and Karen well in their retirement. Is, I know she's here. Is Ms. Teresa Robinson here?
I just want to say, first of all, my name is Teresa Robinson Ewing. I've been at RJ Bailey for 28 years, 28 wonderful years. The best staff in Greenberg Central 7. The best principal. I've taught 44 years in total, and I have one model that I always tell my kids. Good, better, best. Never take a rest until your good is better and your better is best. Thank you.
Is Juana Soto here? Come on. Nope? Okay. We can wait, she deserves it.
Thank you very much for everything. Oh, thank you very much for everything. I've been at RJ Bailey for 19 years, and I think it was the right place for me. Thank you, Ms. Kiana Washington, for everything. Love you.
Is Mr. Reginald Wilson here? No. I see Mr. Quincy Wright.
Wow. First of all, protocol has been set, and I just want to say again to our principal, Ms. Washington, we love you. I can recall when I first came to Greenberg, I had ten offers from different schools in Westchester County. But I said at the interviewing committee that if Greenberg would accept me because I'm an alumni of Woodlands, that I would park here. And so I was accepted, and I've been here for 20 years. One of the things that the students asked me, they said, "Mr. Wright, how do you know when you're giving your best?" And I said, "You have to know when you're giving 100%." I said, "I'm going to give you the test. What I'm going to ask you to do is to hold your breath until I tell you to stop." And so the kids took in a deep breath, and they held it, and I never told them to stop. And so, one by one, the air came out of their lungs, and they all gave out. And I said, "When you took that breath to breathe in to give you life, that was 100%." And I said to them that if you do not do everything in your life like that, then you're not giving 100%. And so I say to all the parents here, grandparents, teachers, give 100%. God bless you.
It is important to note that we have a retiree who is not with us. Her name is Daria Crosha. Many of you may know Daria. She was probably one of the funniest people I've met here in my five years in the Greenberg Central School District. She retired in December of 2017, but she passed away shortly thereafter. So obviously, she is not here to accept her acknowledgements, but she is here because she was at Woodlands Middle High School, and so her spirit is definitely with us this evening. In addition, there are retirees who were not able to attend this evening, and so they are to be acknowledged. One is Joy Alter, who is a library media specialist here at Woodlands Middle High School, and she does offer the following words. "Please extend my heartfelt gratitude to the board for this invitation to meet at 8:00 PM on June 19th, but unfortunately, I will not be able to attend. I have enjoyed my tenure at Greenberg and will always be grateful for having had the opportunity to continue to the academic well-being of our students." And that's Joy Alter. There are several, please. There are several other retirees who could not be with us. There are several other retirees who could not be with us and they are definitely worthy to be acknowledged. Deborah Haig of Leeve Jackson, John Graves of Woodlands Middle High School, Kestna Lusant of Woodlands Middle High School, and last but definitely not least, Marie Lusant of Woodlands Middle High School. Thank you.
If you look to the side here, there's a table full of refreshments. We will now take an intermission for approximately 10 minutes. Talk to you after that. All right, let's reconvene. All right, we now come to statements from the public. I'm gonna read my introductory statement here. "Per Board Policy 1510, the Greenberg Central School District Board of Education encourages public participation on school-related matters at board meetings. Copies of the official board statement regarding public input are included in the agenda. Hard copies of the agenda are on the back table and also accessible on board docs. In response to public questions at our last work session, a frequently asked questions document on principal hiring, evaluation, and tenure is available on the back table. Sign up with the district clerk if you wish to speak. The rules for public comments. One, you have four minutes to speak and ask questions. There's a clock and I'll let you know if you run out of time. If you ask a question and we give you a long-winded answer, the clock stops while we answer and starts again when you speak. Two, you're addressing your remarks to the board president. I usually pass your questions on to the administration. Board members and administrators have the right to ask you questions as well. So if you see a bit of board participation, that's where it comes from. Three, all speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner." Let me repeat that. "All speakers are to conduct themselves in a civil manner. Be polite. Don't make personal attacks. Don't publicly critique someone's performance. Four, the board is not allowed to discuss personnel matters regarding specific employees or students in public session. They have privacy rights. If you say, "Mr. Warner is the finest teacher in the district. Why haven't you given a raise for his performance?" We'll answer, "The Board of Education will not permit in public session comments involving individual district personnel or students. If you want a substantive answer, you can ask a question not about the individual, but about the process." So you ask a question like, "What is the process for determining teacher salaries?" We'll do our best to either answer the process question or get back to you if we can't. One last thing. We have so much personnel information going on that we're gonna have to have a second closed session. So we're going to finish the public input. We'll do our open session reports. And then before we would pass any resolutions on the agenda, we'll go back into closed session to discuss all of the things that we have heard and any other personnel matters that we have. And with that, I'd like to call our first speaker. It looks like Christina or Jayden Roberts. We have someone young here. Dr. Chase, are we good?
Sure.
Okay.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Jayden Roberts and I am a student at RJ Bailey School. And I think we, as the students of RJ Bailey, are asking you that you allow Ms. Washington to return as our principal in time for graduation. We also believe that she should not be in trouble for a broken computer even though she followed the procedure and called the police once she knew what was going on. We, the students of RJ Bailey, should have a voice in all of this because it is our education that matters and she impacts our education. And I started a petition on behalf of the RJ Bailey students to bring Ms. Washington back. And we got about 60-something signatures. We could have got more, but some people were scared because they thought that they would be suspended.
All right. So submit that. Do you have one copy or you have a bunch of copies? Do you have one copy? Give it to the district clerk. Thank you. There's more? Okay. You still have time.
You guys say this about us. I think you should value our opinion because we really care about her and we really want her to be there so she could hand out everything. She could hand out their certificates and stuff so that we can be honored from her. Since we've been with her for three years.
Since our names are both drawn up, finish the rest of his time. My name is Christina Roberts. I am Jayden's mother. I am a parent of Richard J. Bailey. I am from Greenberg. I have attended Greenberg Schools. My son has received the principal's award. He has received high honors three times and we'll make it fourth tomorrow. Ms. Washington, along with the other teachers, have been so great to my child and other children. And we are here because we want Ms. Washington back. We want her at our graduation. We want her to-- what she did for my son, as he said to me, he said, "Mom, she makes us want to learn. She brings the best out of us." And this has been from day one that he came in to this school. He has exceeded all my expectations and probably other teachers can tell you as well. So we're asking, and I'm asking the board, to make the right decision and think about all the children that are like him. All the children that can come in and be like him and succeed in life. Because as he said, the other students were very scared and they said, "We don't want to sign because we don't want to get suspended or expelled or be taken out like Ms. Washington." And that's not right. But we do want children to be encouraged and to understand that they do have a voice. And I teach him to speak. We do have a voice. So maybe that his voice may change. You may reach into your hearts. As I sent every one of you an email, that was from me with the video and the pictures that we did on their dance to have Ms. Washington be a part of it, be a part with them. We went and bought her flowers and balloons and we wanted her to be there. That was from me. We just asked you open, with myself and my son, that you open your hearts and not make decisions based on somebody else, but take it and base it on your own heart and think about the children because it is, at the end of the day, about the children. Because the children are gonna be the next people that are sitting in your chairs, that are taking your jobs. You're teaching them the right thing. Because the children, they are our future. Thank you. Thank you.
Next up, it looks like Paula Robosco Donches? Donches.
Good evening.
Go ahead.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Thank you for letting me speak tonight. I was asked by the staff. We wrote a letter. You've all received copies of this letter, but I'd like to read it for the community to show that we do support Mrs. Washington. "Dear Mr. Warner, it has come to our attention that there is a possibility that Mrs. Kiana Washington, principal of RJ Bailey School, may not continue in her leadership position. We felt it was our professional and moral obligation to our students, parents, the community, to express to you and all trustees of Greenberg School District our unwavering support for Mrs. Washington. The staff at our school is in a unique position of having benefited from Mrs. Washington's leadership on a daily basis for the last five years. We know firsthand how she advances the educational and social-emotional goals for our students, how her steady hand guides us through complicated issues, how her warm disposition and compassion are ever-present, and how she serves as a role model, inspiring staff. Parents tell us frequently that whenever they have reached out to Mrs. Washington with a problem or concern, they have come away not just reassured, but with the belief that they have a genuine advocate for their child. There is much talk of the need for community in order for students to succeed. We know that connecting with the community is much more than a series of yearly special events. It is our belief that one reason Mrs. Washington means so much to all of us is because she has lived our school. She graduated from Woodlands. Her children attend school here. And even her mother graduated from Woodlands. It is our hope that Mrs. Washington's unwavering integrity and devotion to our school and community will be recognized and that she will continue to serve as our leader. Respectfully, the RJ Bailey staff."
Thank you.
I've got a few more seconds. On a personal note, two years ago, I was transferred to RJ Bailey and it was tough for me. I'd worked 29 years at the Leeve Jackson School. And I was hurt. I was-- wow. Mrs. Washington welcomed me with open arms. She supported me and my special ed students. And I don't know what to say. I feel privileged to work at the RJ Bailey School. And that's what I have to say. Thank you, Mrs. Washington.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Patricia Weems. Do you need assistance with the mic? Can somebody-- Can they-- Give her the mic.
I think that's-- can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I'd like to address the board. The board that represents the group of people that are here today. I want to represent the board. I want the board to represent us as you go through a very difficult time. Number one, I'm gonna ask the board not to accept the resignation of Kiana Washington. The rationale behind that, I've been doing a lot of studying lately. I have taken the sabbatical from the school board, but I managed to come up with a lot of information that I want the board to be aware of. You've all voted to have-- no, let me start by saying the prerequisites that was on the applicable of AVOE that was put on OLSO.
OLS? OLS.
O-L-A-S stated what you wanted in an elementary principal for Richard J. Bailey. Now, that was made after a meeting that we had on May the 29th. And on June the 1st, it appeared on that monitor asking for someone to submit their resume, a VITA, for employment, which I thought was detrimental to the credibility of this superintendent that we now have. I looked at records of-- from information that I received, newspaper articles, which you all have a copy of. I've written two letters. I was gonna ask for questions for you to answer, but I will do that at the June 26 meeting. On this meeting, I want to do a comparison. Start by saying that Kiana Washington did not get 50% increase at Richard J. Bailey by herself. It was a team effort, the team that was standing here. It was an assistant principal. These people all got together and did a great job for the year 2016 and 2017. I don't have the scores for the New York State tests for 2017, 2018, but when I have them, I will come back to this board and tell you what you should already know. That the person who you've asked to submit a resignation is one that has been, at all times, what we, the community, want in a principal. And that is basically, you have-- And that is basically, you have a person there that can work with the people in that building. You don't have to be liked. You have to do your job. She did that. Now, you have hired people from places that have no diversity. You've hired a person, I'm using this for comparison, I'm not calling any names, that has come to this place, Greenberg Central School District, and I can understand why we are forced to be reckoned with. This person was in a three-car accident, head-on collision, driving while under--
I'm, I'm sorry, don't--
No, I'm just comparing. This is a comparison. This is a person that's employed here. It's a newspaper article--
No, you, you, you can't do this.
Oh, no?
No.
But it's a newspaper article. It's something that's--
It does not matter that it's a newspaper article.
Okay, then I'll leave that out and state that if you, as the board, have, can I do it that way?
I don't know. Finish your sentence and we'll find out.
If you, as the board, have given this person the right to come here and work, recognizing all of the faults that this person has, then that is the same consideration you should give to Kiana Washington. Now, it's nowhere alike, it's incomparable, because this person has done things that I would have never hired that person. But when you have a person who has done what she should do in the classroom, you shouldn't use paper to state that I don't want you to be, to receive tenure, which she did receive.
I, I'm afraid your time is up. No, I'm, I'm afraid your time is up.
My time is up. Is anybody willing to relinquish their three minutes, tell me a four minute?
Not that, we--
You can do that.
Do you have it written down? Could you hand it on to the next person?
I beg your pardon?
Can you hand, can you hand your speech on to the next person?
No, because that's information that person doesn't have. And if you ask me a question, I can answer it.
Do you want to ask us a question? Because that's--
Yes, my question is, why would you hire someone who does not have, let me use what the gentleman over here said, moral fiber, this is the recipient of the award.
All right. No, I can't even allow that because we can't answer those questions.
No, I'm telling you, in my, in my, in my summation of what I'd like to present to you, that the gentleman who received the award for, from Bailey Jackson--
We can't, we can't respond to those questions.
It's not a question. I'm, I'm--
Thank you.
That is example.
We need to move on to the next person. The next person is Christopher Suber. Are you, are you Christopher Suber? Uh, we need a, we need, can Christopher Suber speak?
I'm Miss Karen Anderson.
Okay. Go ahead. She's, she's speaking, she's got, she's got the spot.
Can I pass my time on to--
So, no, your name is?
My name is Nikia Morris-Suber, and I'm Christopher Suber's mom.
Nikia Suber. Okay, so you're the actual speaker?
Yes, along with my son. I'm coming--
Go ahead.
Okay. Yes, I'm coming to you because I attended the meeting on May 29th that we was made aware of at last minute as a parent of a child that's in RJ Bailey School. I also have a son who's at Woodlands Middle High School as well. My son entered RJ Bailey School as a student, day one, dealing with many issues that stemmed from, issues from Hyview. Starting from day one, issues occurred. Each and every single time that my son had an issue, he was able to approach his principal, Kiana Washington. My son felt comfortable. There was many times that he would go and speak to Kiana Washington on his own and express the issues. I don't like to say bullying because I understand these kids are 11 and 12 and nine years old, but he was quote-unquote bullied. She continuously spoke with him, managed the situation, handled the situation, and I always felt comfortable with my son in that school. When Kiana was removed from that school, the Friday after Kiana was removed from that school, which I have emailed Dr. Chase about, my son was bullied in that school. He was grabbed around his neck in that school. The situation was not handled well in that school. And then, when my son, the following Tuesday, decided to defend himself, he was then disciplined for defending himself. I, as a parent, who went to Woodlands, went to RJ Bailey, have grown up in this community, was totally disappointed. Now, I will say that when I initially tried to contact the authority figures in that school, I did not get a response that I appreciated. But I will say, I contacted Dr. Chase and all of a sudden, phone calls started ringing. I started getting emails, and it was taken care of. However, my son still had to deal with disciplinary action. While the child who attacked my son the following Friday did not receive disciplinary action, according to his parent, I just want to say one thing. When you decide to pick a principal of a school, whether it's someone from the community or not from the community, you make sure that that principal cares about the children that's in that school. You do not pick someone because they're going to go along with what you want to happen. You have to remember, my son is 11 years old. He was attacked on a school bus in Greenberg Central 7, at seven years old. It was on videotape, so I'm not making this up. I let Mr. Matriangelo handle that situation. I've always respected principals that was within the school districts that you have provided for us. However, the way that you removed Kiana Washington from that school was disrespectful to the parents. Then, within the meeting on May 29th, we were told, "Oh, well, we don't think the kid was affected." We all know this room now is a lie. Because when you remove that, hey, you cannot tell me that nine, 10, and 11-year-old kids are not going to be affected. When you take a child who's shy, and I'm sure there's teachers in this, in here that has taught Christopher, who's shy and hardly wants to say anything, and he wants to put his name down to speak on behalf of his principal, that speaks volumes. And I'm sure teachers will tell you, you can probably even get 15 words out of him to speak in front of a classroom, but he wants to speak in front of you, 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 to tell you how he felt about his principal. So I want you to think about that, regardless if you do not rescind her resignation or not. You think about the next person you bring into this school and how they're going to impact the children going forward. Because it's not always about what you want to happen, it's about the children that attend RJ Bailey, Lee F. Jackson, Hyview, and Woodlands.
Thank you. Next up, I'm trying to read this, looks like, Missalakato?
The last name is spelled C-A-T-O-E, Licolet Cato.
Got it.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I stand before you as a concerned parent residing in Hartsdale, New York, at the demeanor of this board throughout this process. I personally find many situations, faces, to be disrespectful. I also am disturbed by the, what I feel has been the disregard for the community outcry in support of Principal Kiana Washington. I find it to be appalling and off-putting that you would have these numbers of parents and community leaders and students out, of which I'm sure you've never seen these kind of numbers here in Greenberg in years, in support of someone that has been a contributing member of society, and it appears as if our cries, our interest, our desires have gone unheard. And that is what is most disturbing. And I'd like to remind you that you have been placed in office to serve the people. The people have not been placed in office to serve you. So with that being said-- With that being said, I, like the parent that stood up before, ask you to consider rejecting Ms. Washington's resignation in the best interests of not only the students, but as well as the board and the community at large. Thank you.
Thank you. Dana Curtin.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Dana Curtin. I'm a resident of Greenberg and have been my whole life. I attended ECP. This was my teacher right here. And I was a bit rough, I know. I went through Hyview. I busted my head and got this beautiful scar at RJ Bailey and fell right there in the cafeteria at Woodlands, graduating class of 1990. So, Woodlands and Greenberg has always been my home. I am a teacher, and when I speak about Greenberg, I speak about home. But home is dysfunctional right now. So I'm not going to use my time to speak about what we all know we're speaking about, about save Ms. Washington, what good work she's done. Instead, I'm going to use my time to thank Mrs. Washington for the good work she's done. My son, I have two children, my son attended Hyview. He attended ECP, he did great. He attended Lee F. Jackson, he did wonderful. He went to Hyview and he had a problem. The teacher. It wasn't a bully from a student, it was the teacher. The teacher kept my son in the front of the room for two months. And my son was so afraid to tell me, he would just get sick and throw up, and my mother would have to go pick him up on a daily basis. And it wasn't until another parent called me on the phone at work and said, "You need to go show up at that school because something's wrong." My son hated school. I was going to pull him out of Greenberg, I was going to put him in Stepnapo, wherever my money was going to take me, because I was so disappointed in my school district, that a teacher, and I'm a teacher, so I know the game, would pull on a child who couldn't defend himself. I'm going to take my child out. Mrs. Washington said, "Nope, he's coming to Bailey. Let's let this rock, let's see what happens." She put him in a class with a black male teacher. I'm a single parent. I'm a good single parent, but I'm a single parent raising two young black men. She turned him around. She gave him a teacher that challenged him. She gave him a math teacher that challenged him. My son, last month--
Amen.
--was inducted into the--
National Honor--
National Honor Society. You guys weren't there, nobody from the board showed up, but Mrs. Washington was right there. And this is right around the time that all of this is coming on. She came with her head held high and came to see my son get his award. Right then and there, that speaks volumes, to have to come in the midst of all of this with her head up high, because she has nothing to put her head down for. And come and congratulate my child. I have another son, and he's a bit of a tickler. But Ms. Washington made sure he got what he needed. And when I decided that my son was just going to struggle through it, she gave me some advice. She said, "You don't speak death into the life of a child's education." And I remember that, and that took me far. Three years ago, I was featured on a Nova special, Teachers of the Future, and I remember saying that, "You don't speak death into the life of a child into a circumstance of anything." After that, I was nominated for an award. I'm one of the top five teachers in the Bronx, elementary school teachers. But I don't, no, I don't want the clap, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, I use what I was taught. Don't speak life into the death of a child. I was taught that by Ms. Washington. I was taught that by a wonderful educator. I was taught to be a part of my community. I didn't want to be on the PTA. She called me and said, "We need somebody to be on the PTA. Our PTA person just quit." I joined the PTA. I was on the PTA as a fifth grade vice president, as a sixth grade vice president, and right here in Woodlands High School this year. She got me involved in the community, speaking death into a situation. So, and I know my time is up, and I'm going to wrap it on up, but Mrs. Mayers, Mr. Bitterman, Mr. Williams, Mr. Warner, Ms. Antoinette Darden, Mr. Lloyd Newlin, Ms. Glacia, Mrs. O'Neil, and Dr. Chase, death has not been spoken into this woman's career. She is going to go far, far beyond this. But it's a shame that she can't do it here where she can really affect change in the lives of these children. Last one, my son Jonathan, who struggled through, made the honor roll this year.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, Sandra Weaver.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My heart is really troubled this evening as I sit and I listen to all the remarks made. It's our children that we're talking about. Every decision that you all sit there and make affects our children, our children. And you cannot take that lightly. And I hear the words uttered over and over tonight, respect. Respect. As board members, you want the community to respect you. We voted to put you where you are seated. We demand respect, and we should have respect. It is disrespectful to utilize parents and teachers' times. It is 10 o'clock at night, and like many of you, I am up at 4:00 a.m., but yet I felt it not robbery of my time tonight. But this was disrespectful. It's disrespectful to have parents, you say you want parent involvement, but my question is, do you really? Because if you did, you would recognize that our parents work, many of them. You would recognize that our teachers are up very early in the morning. You would recognize that our community leaders, they too are up and out. You would recognize that you would not have them in this room, 7:00 at night, waiting until 8:25 to come back to then have a few words and presentations which were lovely, and then take another 10-minute break, which led to 20 minutes. And here we are now at 10:03 at night. It's disrespectful. You cannot say that you want the parent's voice. Do you really want our voices? Do you really want a collaboration if this is what you do at the time? You need to reorganize this whole board situation so that when you call a meeting at 7:00, that the parents come out and they want to come out, and they want to be involved. I've had three children come through this district, and I was a parent member. I was a, one of the board committee members. I was a PTA from RJ Bailey, Lee F. Jackson, the middle school, the high school, the PTA council. And it requires time, and I didn't mind giving that time, but don't abuse and waste my time. Do not let me come out here and give a voice and the voice not be heard. There is no business that I know of that makes unilateral decisions without the most important stakeholders. These are your most important stakeholders, and they're children. I don't understand. I don't understand how you can have teachers who come out to support the principal, a very good principal, and yet you have your teachers in this room waiting for an hour and a half. I don't understand. I just don't understand. And I don't know what you can say to me to make me understand that. But voice and respect is, and you need to reorganize the meetings. And now you're going to leave again to go out and make a decision after we leave here tonight, so we still can't get the full extent of the meeting. So my question to you is, do you really want the stakeholders involved? We know that research shows one of the, two of the most important keys in education is to have parent involvement and to have, and to have educators who look like the students in which they are teaching. And as our educators who look like the students that they are teaching are leaving our district one by one, you need to recognize that when those resumes come across your desk, what are we really giving our children? What is the value that you really are setting precedent for? Listen to these children's voices, recognize the parent's voice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Nikki Josephs. Okay. So, if I understand correctly--
Yeah.
So--
Why do you have to do that? We're here at 7:00. Why do you run out and do an hour and a half coming back to answer that question?
All right. So, at the end of the school year, we honor people. We have the Nettie Jackson Extra Mile Award, we honor the teachers, all of that's kind of, kind of set in stone. Okay? You, you know that part. Kids can't do anything about that. Then, there's the business about having a closed session before we get to the, the open session portion of the meeting. We've been doing it for-- We've been doing it for at least five years in this way. So if we changed it back without adequate notice, then people will come in at 8:00 and be unhappy because they missed their public input time. So we have to do it in advance. We could, we could possibly do the closed session after the public input time. The reason for the second, the second session is first, we're hearing a whole bunch of stuff here. And second, we didn't get through all of our closed session stuff. And we, out of, yes, there's a certain level of respect for the public. We said, "We can't sit here and finish our closed session stuff. People are waiting outside." So we came back before we finished it. So, we have made an effort and decided to have a second closed session in order to get, let you guys come and speak and get out of here. So, we're trying. We could do more. That's it.
So, the meeting should start at 8:30. If you get here at 7:00, you need an hour and a half. So why don't you start the meeting at 8:30? I mean, why have us sitting here for an hour and a half waiting for you?
So, I mean, that's normally what happens. The regulars know that you don't come in till 8:00. And we think we come in first.
You have to change your mind about what you're considering. But as you can hear, you see, it's gonna be hurt.
Yeah. Yeah. If we change our mind, then we've got to put it on the agenda well in advance. Otherwise...
Children are gonna be hurt because of what you have done.
Okay, let's go on to the next speaker. Thank you. Okay. Walter Simon.
Well, good evening. I, like most of you, are, I am hurt, disappointed, frustrated with the actions of the board and with the superintendent. But there's three things. That's not enough. We have to focus, there's three things that we need to focus on. I remember, we talked earlier when we were here when you were in the executive board session, that the need for us to be proactive as opposed to be reactive. And I bring to mind one back in the '60s. With my big Afro and the shiki, we used to, we used to go to public meetings, disrupt public meetings. And we would put out and we'd picket. While we were on the outside picketing the meeting, people were on the inside making decisions that affected my life. I got smart. And that's when I got on every, I became on how many boards? President of some boards? Because I want to be in the inside making the decision. So as a community, that's what we have to think about. How do we come out to meetings and be part of making the decision rather than coming out after the decision is made and protesting? The other thing, the other takeaway is that saying, "Keep your eye on the prize." The prize is the education of my grandchildren, every child in the district. That's the prize. And we have to stay laser focused on that prize. It's not about the board members. It's not about the superintendent. You know, unfortunately, it's not, the key point, it's not even Mrs. Washington. It is, the driving issue is the education of our children. And we have to do everything that focuses that way. The third thing is something that we used to say in the '70s. You have no permanent enemies. You have no permanent friends. You only have a permanent interest. And again, that permanent interest is the education of our children. So regardless of how the final vote comes out, we have to keep our eyes on those three things. Because whether the vote is the way we want it or the vote isn't the way we want it, those three things are still applicable. And we have to focus on that. And, and, and the other thing, we need to make sure the board, the superintendent, and everyone's accountable in terms of setting clear objectives for the, for the district. Measurable objectives. Clear measurable objectives for the superintendent. Clear measurable objectives for principals. And with periodic reporting to the public, how are you progressing towards those objectives? And we need that, you see? And so, as I said, this is what I see we need to do. And, and don't get frustrated and say, "I don't like what happened, therefore I'm not gonna participate in the PTA meeting, or I'm not gonna be part of this committee." That's counterproductive. We have to, we have no other choice. We, if we are seriously concerned about the education of our children, we cannot let whatever actions take place tonight, one way or another, deter us from our responsibility of educating our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Jennifer Perry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm from this community. As I stated two weeks ago, I told you guys that we were not going to go away and we would be back, and we are here. I've worked in all, I went through Greenberg Central 7. I worked in all Greenberg Central 7 schools. I'm third generation from Greenberg. Clearly, this is political. Even at the worst, if everything you are trying to spin is true, ultimately, it does not warrant termination. And by far, Principal Kiana, the work that she has done at Bailey, the work that she has done in the community, the fact that the teachers came out here and stood up for her, the fact that the children are here, the fact that they're signing their names, and the fact that some of them were terrified to sign their names because they did not want to happen to them what they saw happen to their principal. Far worse has happened at the middle in the high school and been swept under the rug. I was a student here when a teacher and administrator was sleeping with students, and he was not terminated. He just was put in the mansion, kept with his salary, statutory rate. So if this district is so concerned about students, something should have happened with that. This is a direct attack against Principal Washington and the community. And by the board vote, it shows, was it, what was it, four to three? That you're no longer representing the community but are pawns of the current administration. As a community board, you made a decision that rocks the entire community without ever hearing Principal Washington's sigh. Most of what is being spun is not true and can be shown with documentation and witnesses, especially with this potential threat situation where at the end of it all, nothing happened. How are we? How are we to believe Principal Washington ever got a fair shot? Or that you didn't have your minds already made up when on June 1st, you posted her job on OLAS for the new position to be coming in in July? So how is it, how are we to think that your minds were open? Your hearts were open? You hadn't already had a decision made? Your positions are positions that the community, we the community, we vote you in and we will vote you out. That is the power that we have. All power to the people. That's the power that we have. The changing of the guard that's happening in this community, the concern about white flight, the whitening and changing of things, the removal of people of color, of power and influence, we see it. Kids showed up at the bowling alley with flowers for Principal Washington, with love, with cards, with hugs. We are also convinced that there is more to this than has been revealed. We know that. Spin it how you want. I'll stop the wheel from spinning. But what happened was this situation presented itself. So now you had an opportunity to do the dirty work that you, that you always wanted to do, but now this is the scapegoat for it. It gave you the opportunity to do what you always wanted to do. And while you may think, and some of you even have the audacity to say that it's a new day and you don't care about the community and it's not like how it used to be, we're here to tell you and show you otherwise. We demand you rescind Principal Washington's resignation because it did not come without duress. You gave an ultimatum. Resign or be fired. Clearly, this whole non-tenure issue has all sorts of loopholes for the powers that be. But I'm gonna leave you with this one thing. Like Malcolm X said, "If you don't stand for something, you will fall for anything."
Thank you. Next up, Rita Jones.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I think everything that I would have said has been said. As the board can see, everyone in this community is very concerned. I've been hearing a lot of things. And the first concern was, "Why was the principal fired on a weekend? Why couldn't it wait?" The other part of that was, "She's a principal. Why couldn't she have gone to graduation?" And then, you could have discussed whatever process you wanted to go. People are feeling that the processes and procedures in the community are flawed. They're, what they're saying is, "Because you can do it, it's done." And the board is backing all of this up. People have feelings. And in today's day, when people are stressed out, why would you want to let someone go on a weekend when people should be enjoying themselves and happy, then they're told they're gone? That's just not something we do. Another part of this is, I know you're putting cameras in, which is supposedly to be safe for the children. But I caution the board and everyone else. Yes, we want our children safe. We all want to be safe. But with the cameras in the building, what, who are you looking at? Are you looking at the teachers, the staff? And maybe spying on them to see if you can catch them doing something that you feel they should not have done? We have to be very careful that we do not infringe on people's civil rights by saying that we're trying to keep the children safe. Yes, we all want to be safe. I don't think there's anyone in this room that would want to be safe and would want their children safe. But we have to be careful when we overdo things. As I said before, what I'm hearing is people are doing things in this district because they have the power to do it. And it has to be stopped. And at this point, whatever decision is made, I think somewhere in this, we're gonna have to have a big meeting where community can come with the administration and the board and discuss things back and forth, get real answers, ask real questions to know what's, to move forward. Because there's a lot of healing that has to be done. As I listen to the teachers at Bailey, and I listen to the parents and the students, we can see the love for Kiana. I knew Kiana when she was in high school. I knew her as a principal. And let me say this. We all have faults. But if you have faults, I believe there's mentoring that can be done at any level. And I think, and I think that's part of the plan to mentor anyone in this district, and they should be mentored. Again, I would say this. The process was flawed, and now we have to try to heal. Because there's no going forward unless there is something being done. And I would think it has to be done with community, administration, and board. They have to come to some real answers and know why the decision was made the way it was, why the board went along with it. And I know the board, let me just say this. I realize the superintendent has the last word. Okay? She can say he can have tenure. The board cannot say anything else. Because she says you. If you cannot have tenure, the board cannot say you can have it. Okay? That's, that's what it is. That's the rule. That's the rule. So, but healing has to be done. But I have one, another question and another subject here in your minutes. You have homeschooling for children. And I understand, of course. Oh, does it fly? Thank you. There is homeschooling on, you don't, you don't have numbered pages. Yes, I'm sorry, you do.
You do.
14? You have homeschooling. And years ago, I know you used to have teachers. Is that not done anymore? You see the bottom of the page?
It's not on 14.
Uh, well, then you have a different agenda than I have.
Can you give us a, a, a item number?
Uh, wait a minute.
Section and item. It's like a letter and a number.
Okay, it is, I think which is this? It's right here. But there's no number here. Right here.
Student Services, section I. Item number nine.
I-9.
Okay. Why are we hiring people and we don't have the teachers doing this now? Student Services.
The Omni Group.
ZAMP Tutoring? Something tutoring?
Does the title say, "The Omni Group"?
Uh, no, it says, "ZAMP Tutoring LLC."
Page 24? ZAMP Tutoring LLC?
Yes.
Okay.
Good evening, Mrs. Jones.
Good evening.
We hire outside contracts for students who cannot attend schools for various reasons. Typically, it's students who may physically not be able to attend school. And ZAMP Tutoring provides the necessary instruction for students who are unable to attend school.
I understand that, but years ago, teachers used to do that. What happened to that?
We tend to post for positions for various reasons, for out-of-district additional support for students. But when we don't have the manpower, when we don't have enough, then we have to go to outside organizations. Because by law, I am supposed to provide those students with an education, whether I have enough teachers who post into the position or not.
In other words, you go to the teachers first, or you just have?
We always post first. We always post first. So if we have students who receive outside instruction, we always go to our teachers first. And when we don't have enough, we always seek outside organizations to help us.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Our last speaker is Ms. Cora Carey.
Good evening. I think I have said most of what I want to say about Kiana. And I think she knows how I feel about it. But I want to talk about some children now. And those children are our special ed children. I understand from a rumor that there's a possibility that the one-on-one privilege that some of our special ed children have will be taken away, and it will be a one-on-two. Okay? Now, my grandson will run at the sight of a grasshopper, or maybe a flea. So he needs a one-on-one. And you know I'm very concerned about the special ed department, because I want to make sure that those kids get the same type of education that any other kid in the school gets. I'm not concerned about what people think. So I'm gonna talk about our black and brown students. I'm a racist. That's what they call me out there. Some of the people feel that I talk too much about blackness. But that's what I am. I know nothing else. So I can't speak on anything that I am not familiar with. So when I talk about the fact that I feel that the majority of our special ed kids are of color, I say that because I want them to get the best education possible. And I want this Board of Education to make sure that they get it. We have many students that need education. I don't care if they sit in a wheelchair and dribble. If they have a one-on-one, that one-on-one needs to get off her butt, stop chatting on the phone or playing games, and help that child, even if she puts a puzzle in front of that child and says, "This is a cow," and the cow goes here. That child may never be able to pick up that piece of puzzle and may never, ever be able to put it together, but at least they're getting something. I just want to say this very quickly. My granddaughter and I, I'm very into my granddaughter, my great-grandkids. We had a situation over at Bailey where my great-grandson was not getting what I felt and my granddaughter felt was the proper educational experience. And the teacher was kind of... She was, I don't know. I don't even have a word for it right now, because it's late and I'm getting old and my brain is draining. But she helped us straighten out that situation with my great-grandson, and I appreciated that very much. So as I said before, Kiana's gonna be fine. And one day she will come back, and she will be possibly the superintendent of the school district. So I have to thank you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Cora. We seem to have one additional speaker. That's Bishop Preston.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. To the board, to the superintendent, I greet you in the name of Jesus Christ, my Savior. I come before you tonight with quite a bit of concerns and several different venues, but I'm gonna try to stick to the subject at hand. The first thing I want to address is the public meeting law of the state of New York. And the public meeting law states that when you have a public meeting, that meeting should be for the benefit of the public, not to have closed sessions. Your closed session should be done on your work session night. And you work out the agenda for the public meeting at that session. Unless something comes up in the public meeting, open meeting, that you must go into closed session for. So I indulge you to look at that and reconsider the structure of your meeting, because it is very improper and very disrespectful for you to hold the community at bay for an hour and a half before you come back. So just consider that. And I have some other concerns. With all the data and all the information that I've received and looked at concerning Ms. Washington, and I'm wondering where is the depth that this is so egregious that she has to go from this district? Because, and I understand protocol, I understand rules and regulations. But when you think about what she's offered and how she's given, I don't really, I'm still struggling to see what is egregious that this has to be done. And so maybe you can explain that. I also would like to commend the community for standing up and coming forth at this time. But this should not be an event. This should be something that's done consistently. I would like to see the time when we had so many people. I used to come, but now I serve on several boards and I have responsibilities that I have to attend. And I can't spread myself so thin and be a pastor of the church that we have to have the meetings in the auditorium. So many people attend the board meetings. I would like to see that time. And the other concern is, I'm concerned about the board and how long this board will continue to operate like you operate, not hearing or not acting as if you hear the concerns of the community. The community is the people that are the people that vote up or vote down the budget. Maybe we need to resurrect, have a lawsuit, and start voting budgets down until the community is heard. Because these things should not take place if you're going to continue to operate like you do. And if I may speak prophetically to Kiana, Kiana, the Bible says that there is no weapon formed against you that shall not prosper. And I want to take the time to prophesy to you and tell you that this might seem like a setback, but it is a setup for stand-up.
Thank you, Bishop Preston. All right. Next up, we have the superintendent's report. Dr. Chase?
As part of the superintendent's report, it is a late hour. I would like to share a couple of very important dates that are coming up with the community and also for those who are watching at home. I'd like to remind the community, as well as those who are watching at home, that our moving up ceremonies, as well as our graduation ceremonies, are upon us. This is that time of year. Today, we celebrated ECP students who will be moving on to kindergarten in a carnival moving up ceremony. First grade recognition in the classrooms will take place on June 21st at 9:30 a.m. at Leif Jackson at the various first grade classrooms. Third grade recognition will take place on June 22nd at 9:30 a.m. at Highview School in the various classrooms, where students will have an opportunity to showcase their work. Sixth grade recognition will take place here at Woodlands Middle High School in the auditorium on June 20th at 11:30 a.m. The commencement ceremony for our senior class of 2018 will take place on June 22nd at 5 o'clock p.m. on our beautiful campus here at Woodlands Middle High School. I'm sure I speak on behalf of the board, as well as the community, in congratulating our class of 2018. We are so proud of our students. In the next couple of days, we will be releasing a video that showcased where all of our students will be going. I've already seen some of the Facebook posts of proud parents sending their kids away and already getting that process underway. And so we're so proud of them. And I see some of the proud parents actually sitting before us this evening. I also want to share with our secondary parents that on June 22nd, we've deemed that day, I don't want to say deemed, we've declared that day as a snow makeup day. As you know, we had a pretty rough winter. And there were a couple of days we had to make up. And you all received notification that our last makeup day is on the 27th. Well, I want to share with the families that on the 27th, I've declared a fourth superintendent's conference day. Here's what that means. A superintendent's conference day means that only the staff and faculty will come to school. Students do not have to be in school on June 27th. We still get credit for the day. Let me repeat that. On June 27th, you receive notification, it was on our social media, you receive the app notification that it is our snow makeup day. It is only for staff and faculty. So students, last day of school will be the 26th. They do not have to come on the 27th. I want to remind all of our community members, as well as staff and faculty who are here, that before you know it, we are back at school. Please remember that staff and faculty return on August 30th. However, our students return to us on Tuesday, September 4th. We look forward to greeting our students, because we have some fantastic things in store in terms of our instructional programs. And we have fantastic plans for our students coming down the pipe. I just want to wish everyone a very peaceful, a very joyous summer break. The summer break is upon us. It is a time for reflection. It's a time to enjoy families. Please keep our kids busy. It's important that we keep our kids busy, because it's very easy to fall victim to the slide. Last week, we had a speaker in our school district, Dr. Teresa Taylor-Williams, who gave some fantastic tips about avoiding that summer slide for our students. Her presentation was televised, so that you all will have an opportunity to see some of her recommendations. She is a board-certified psychotherapist. She's been a friend to our school district, and we look forward to having her return to help us to address the needs of building our social, emotional health of our students. But it's important that we keep our students very busy, our children busy during the summer months, so that they don't regress. And on that note, again, I wish everyone a very happy summer. We'll see you in September with our fantastic instructional programs, especially some of the new ones. And again, I thank you all for a great school year.
That's correct. Yes, there is a work session meeting on the 26th of June. 6:30 p.m. at the mansion boardroom.
Now, when you come back from the review session, can we also ask questions at that stage?
No, at that point, we're gonna run through the agenda and vote. So whatever you said, you said. And then whatever we look at in closed session. All right, next up, we have committee reports. Are there any committee reports? Cherry?
Thank you, David. I have two committee reports, the Governance Committee and the Government Relations Committee. Governance Committee met on June 12th, 2018. Members present were myself, Claudia Glazer, and Antoinette Darden-Centron. Dr. Chase was absent, but sent her recommendation separately to the board chair. Meeting convened at 6:44. The committee members discussed the upcoming board retreat and came up with a list of recommendations for the full board to consider. These include a presentation by the architect and the engineer of our building and consolidation project. Dr. Chase requested that the board spend the afternoon session with the architect and engineer to update the board on the progress that has been made to date. Committee members recommended limiting the presentation to 30 minutes to allow for sufficient time for other topics and to have the architect and engineers attend a separate meeting with the board's Building and Consolidation Committee. I think Dr. Chase will address this more at the work session on the 26th to explain why she wanted to do it that manner. We also recommended that we receive an update from the Building and Consolidation Council, Ingerman Smith, on the investigation into our aid calculation. Dr. Chase subsequently advised the board that the firm would meet with us at our work session on the 26th to share their findings. We recommended creating a communications tree and a procedure for building-to-public, administration-to-public, and administration-to-board communication. Trustee Glazer also shared with us the procedure that the BOSI's board employs to follow up on previously discussed items. And Claudia can elaborate on this at a later time if Dr. Chase and Mr. Warner decides not to include this on the retreat agenda. Participating in a team-building activity, Antoinette and Tracy Mares recommended this. And Antoinette said she would work with Dr. Chase to design it if the recommendation is accepted. The committee recommends that we spend time discussing participation in board... I'm sorry, the committee recommends that we spend time discussing participation in board and district committee assignments. And the final recommendation was to conduct a review of the student code of conduct to ensure that the penalties are appropriate and consistent with our policy. Oh, and that wasn't the last. The last one was the GTF contract negotiations update. Other items that the committee discussed include the following. I'm gonna get procedure manuals from the other districts to identify the best practices for a GCSD board version. Claudia shared time management/issue follow-up procedures from the BOSI's board. And she will make a presentation at the work session with the possible follow-up at the retreat. Committee members discussed the public comments session at the board's recent work session... I'm sorry, committee members discussed the public comments session at our recent work session and the specific mentioning of district personnel at that meeting and others. We will be prepared to discuss the issue further at the work session on the 26th. The meeting adjourned at 7:43, and this was our last meeting of the school year. Government Relations also met on the 28th following the closure of the Governance Committee. Members present were myself, Claudia Glazer, and Antoinette Darden-Centron. Dr. Chase was absent, but communicated her recommendations to the chair. We convened at 7:44. We discussed the board's letter from President Warner in support of amending Chapter 440 Taxation Code of the Town of Greenberg. Simply stated, the proposed amendment would remove the property tax benefit that a homeowner would receive for converting from traditional ownership to a condominium structure. And we gave special props to David for turning that around and getting it through our legal. So good work, Dave. Committee members requested that at the June 26th work session, that President Warner share the details of the June 12th meeting with Paul Feiner and other school board trustees about creating charitable accounts for the purpose of paying school taxes. President Warner subsequently provided some information via email. However, a broader discussion at the work session may be appropriate. We had a brief discussion about the development plans for four quarters. Subsequent to the discussion, it was learned that the town has obtained a grant to finance a study of the redevelopment options for that parcel. The meeting adjourned at 8 o'clock, and that was the committee's last meeting of the year.
Thank you. Other committee reports? Eric?
Hi, good evening. On June 12th, the Education Committee met at the mansion. I think we met at 4:30. And we were treated to a presentation by Dr. Valente. In attendance was myself, Antoinette Darden-Centron, and Tracy Mares. And I should add, many members of our community, as well as professional, our teaching staff and administrators were present. It was a full house. And the first presentation we saw was an advanced learning program. It was an update on ALP. Many in the community had an opportunity later that evening to hear a presentation, and then again this evening, to learn more about the program. Basically, they gave us a quick update as to what had happened according to the rollout of ALP leading up to that evening's meeting. Mostly, the conversation addressed an appeals process should parents have concerns and who to reach out to for more guidance. The second aspect of what we learned that day was about curriculum mapping for grades K through 3. And Dr. Valente was very pleased to announce that there will be a gradual rollout online for the curriculum maps. And what that will allow is for parents and grandparents and everyone in our community to be able to go onto the curriculum map, onto our website, onto the Greenberg Central School District website, and find easily where their child is in the school year and what they would be learning. It's an really opportunity to engage in conversations. So if your child is learning about one's... You can go on, and you'll have some ideas as to what they are learning about. And if you have questions, you could then reach out and talk to your teacher, your child's teacher specifically, about what they're doing and be able to follow along using the curriculum map. But I just mumbled that really badly, and I apologize. Far more articulate people than I will be presenting in the future, far more on the curriculum maps. That was my best save. Okay. Finally, the last thing that we had an opportunity, and I'll try not to go on too much longer. The introduction of a new writing program called the Writing Revolution. Sometimes, I guess it's referred to as TPR. Once again, you will be introduced to the Writing Revolution by far more articulate people than myself. But I will say, what I took away from that was that it's an opportunity to incorporate writing into the subject areas. So no longer should the writing process be isolated in an English classroom, but instead be presented using common language in all classrooms. And then when we see that, and we see those methods and that terminology used, not only class by class, but we'll start seeing it grade by grade. So that students will, it'll just sort of become the vocabulary of the school and the vocabulary that will guide our students. guide our students moving forward. So, uh, my last comment before I say goodnight is that of all the things that a school board engages in, the Education Committee is central. It is what is going on in the classroom. It is an opportunity to come in, to sit, to be presented by our administrative team, by amazing teachers who come in and they talk about what they're doing in their classrooms. So if you are looking for an opportunity to get involved, the Education Committee is an absolutely perfect opportunity to come and see what's happening, you know, right there, um, with our students. So thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to present.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? All right, I have one, the Community Engagement Committee. The GCSD Community Engagement Committee met at RJ Bailey on 6/18. Meeting convened shortly after 7:00 p.m. We reviewed 2017, 18 CEC activities and calendar dates for the next year. How Federal Healthy Food Rule Implementation Was Scaled Back in 2017. Allergy Response Protocols, it's Policy 7513. A List of Frequently Asked Questions and Responses on Hiring, Evaluation, and Tenure of District Principal, Principals. That, Paul, that, uh, document is also on the back table here. The Status of Facilities Repairs. Woodlands and Highview Gym and Bailey Condensation Tank are done. Woodlands', uh, second boiler installation and stair treads are in progress. Uh, the new water main lens is on hold until after Woodlands' graduation, so we'd be, the temporary is in place for now. The Highview stairs still need more input from the architects. That's, that's the one thing that hasn't, hasn't moved forward like it should. Continuing Facilities Consolidation and Building Repair Bond Efforts. Uh, we hired the PR firm Focus Media. Staff groups have met, and the Construction Advisory Committee met on, on June 7th, and will meet again on the June 28th. Preliminary schedule calls for a facilities bond vote in December of 2018. A 2874 and S 1191 condo and co-op legislation process, we heard about that from Terry. Uh, the SALT, uh, $10,000 limit workaround on your taxes, we also heard about that from Terry. Selected upcoming DC, uh, GCSD events, that was all the graduations, and we've heard from, about that from Dr. Chase. Uh, GCSD happenings, we had a photo essay with Flag Day, Highview Authors Night, Woodlands' Awards Ceremony, Spring Concerts, Senior Prong, Passages Literary Magazine, and Athletic Awards Night. Community members provided input on the following topics. Adding a "Do Not Enter" sign to the Woodlands parking lot near the one-way sign we just fixed. Online lunch menus, getting them posted on time. Vote Communications Issues. Security Policy, uh, parent meeting, that we need to have one. EpiPen Train Staff and Supply Locations and Protocols. Superintendent Conference Day Dates. Check-in Routines at District Events. Uh, Reassuring Children Regarding Teacher Absences. Substitute Teachers. Food Services. Modified School Sports Summer Schedule. Phone Blasts for Parent Orientation. Tenure Support for Teachers. Leadership Change Announcements to Parents. Scheduling and the Need for Additional Student Absence Categories in Our Online System. The next meeting of the Community Engagement Committee is next year, uh, 9/24/18 at 7:00 p.m. at Lee F. Jackson School. All are welcome, not just community, not, community, anybody from community can come to this thing. All right. That brings us to our second, no more committee, anyone else with a committee report? Okay, that brings us to our second closed session. All right, we're going to request of the superintendent, uh, that we pull some personnel files. So do I hear a motion to go into closed session to review personnel files and for the purpose of examining the personnel records and discuss the employment history of persons for whom board action may be taken?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? We're in closed session.